Hey Eddie.
Hey Bruce, welcome back to the bounce back. We are back for another week of awesome podcasting.
Okay.
How you doing today Bruce?
I'm working on it. But you man, you look a little rough.
I'm feeling a little rough. I have not gotten as much sleep as I would like to lately. However, I am super excited.
About what?
I have a good friend.
Okay.
Mister Councilman Henry Noonan coming in today to answer some awesome questions about the first step of spiritual recovery. Um, yeah, he's, you know, let me tell you something about this guy, man.
I'm listening.
He is somebody that we've just recently met, right? And he uh, he shows up for recovery, man. He came to my open talk last week. I thought that was really cool.
I didn't go.
No, I know you weren't there, but Henry was there.
Why not?
So that was really cool, Henry.
Yeah, it was.
Just saying. Yeah, it was super nice to Henry to show up. Richard wasn't there either, but that's okay. Richard's still the one doing it. Ladies and gentlemen, Richard behind the camera, everybody.
Please, everyone, yes.
Yeah.
So, everything else is going good on my end. We're starting to get busier at work. The weather's changing.
That's right.
We've got a lot of events coming up.
We do.
This year. Um, I don't have a list of them yet, but uh, when we do, we're gonna let you know what Live Right's all about this summer.
That's right.
Um, on a personal note, how you doing, man? Good? In your recovery?
I'm doing great, man. You know, I feel like my, my recovery is stronger than it's been in years, man. And um, you know, I could say that, um, you know, I'm, I'm trying to work a better program today, you know, um, better than I was. And I always feel like I've worked a pretty strong program, but I got, you know, uh, you know, I got into another men's group. I'm working steps all over again. I'm doing the things, man. I'm doing the things.
Different attitude.
Huh?
Have a different attitude, right?
I thought you said I had an attitude. I'm like, no sir.
You have a different attitude, right?
Yes, I do. A different attitude, you know, cause uh, after so many years, you can become stagnant in recovery.
I've become complacent.
And that's what happened with me. And that was a very scary place to be in. Um, today, I do not take this program, our programs, AA and A, whatever A you wanna be in, I don't really give a damn as long as you're working 12 steps.
Right.
Um, I don't take that for granted today, man.
Right.
Um, it saved my life multiple times. And it's the only thing that's ever worked for me. And, and uh, you know, I feel strong in my recovery today. I feel proud of my recovery.
I've been uh, I've been blessed having the obsession lifted off of me. Um, now it's about my program, being the person, the old Bruce, the person that I used to be.
Hmm.
Um, you know, without alcohol. And I always believed there's recovery minded and relapse minded. There is no in-between for me.
Yeah, same.
And so focusing on uh, being recovery minded, uh, definitely uh, I owe that to my uh, higher power. And who I have to be reminded of constantly.
That's right.
You know, right?
That's right.
And uh, that's kind of the topic we have today. We're working on, as we said, the steps and the spiritual uh, principles of each step. And we're starting out with step one, the spiritual principle that applies to step one.
Step one's an important one because I believe Bruce, it's the only one we gotta get right every single day.
Every day, every minute.
And I cannot wait to hear what Henry has to say about step one.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm excited.
Let's, let's introduce our first guest. First guest, Henry Noonan, please, everyone.
Ladies and gentlemen, Warren City Councilman, Henry Noonan.
Go ahead, have a seat, Henry.
Have a seat, Henry. Welcome, man. Very nice.
Good to have you here.
Nice of you to come out today. We're really excited to have you here.
I'm excited to be here.
Yeah.
Come on, tell us a little bit about yourself, Henry.
Sure. Yeah. Well, um, it was in nineteen eighty-eight, April fourteenth, that um, I had my first day sober in a long time.
Nice.
Um, I had gotten, I progressed from uh, drinking apricot liqueurs, listening to my dad read his books to me because Noonans had to learn how to uh, hold their alcohol, to um, going through things like becoming, you know, snorting cocaine, until I was thoroughly addicted. And then cold turkey and getting off of it, not knowing anything about the twelve steps. Um, becoming a crack cocaine addict while I was driving a handicap van um, in New York City.
Oh.
It was way beyond my, my capacity. It was a typical adult children of alcoholics thing to do.
Sure, sure.
And um, then um, my, my dealer kicked me out and said, we've gotta go somewhere. We've gotta go on a vacation. And she got me to pack my car as if I, she was gonna go with me to Florida.
That's a trick.
When your dealer gives up on you, you know you're like, you've been wrung out, right?
I've had dealers telling me, you need rehab, bro. And that's, well, that's a sure sign of the dealer.
I've never had a liquor store owner say, I don't want your money.
Yeah. But when you're out of money, then that's a different story.
Yeah.
You know, I'd gone from fifty dollar habit to a five hundred dollar a day habit.
My gosh, yeah.
Um, I was in New York and running out of money quick. I'd gotten a loan from Citibank.
Okay.
Which they eventually found me, much to my surprise. While I was in recovery, that was a big crisis in recovery, you know, and going and doing um, you know, your immense steps, going to ask people, you know, to forgive you, was a big thing, but we're on step one today, right?
We are. Could you tell me though, for each step, as you know, how many years you got clean?
I've got thirty-seven years clean.
Isn't that wonderful?
Thirty-seven years.
Wow, I can only wish, right?
I'm only thirty-eight, so. I was one.
You're young.
Yeah.
You're my son's age. No kidding.
Dad.
You're only thirty-eight years old?
Yes, sir.
Right?
Oh my goodness.
So with step one, um, what do you believe the principle, the spiritual principle of step one is to you?
Okay. Well, um, you know, in preparation for this, you guys got me going.
Good.
And uh, so the number one thing is honesty.
Hmm, it is.
So, um, you know, the program, it's a honest program. And it's something that uh, usually is very difficult for alcoholics and drug addicts to do is to be honest, especially about their addiction.
Yes.
And um, you know, you could go in like, for drug addicts, if they got up to a five hundred dollar or more a day habit, then usually they ran out of money and they started stealing things from people that were close to them. And uh, and then they, they learned how to really lie well, and also lying to themselves. So um, at any rate, um, honesty. My father wanted to know what was going on with me when I came home from New York City. And um, I was sleeping twelve hours a day and eating twelve hours a day, cause I hadn't been eating. It was like working an industrial job, um, that was wearing my fingers to the bone, literally, using, trying to clean those little metal screens.
Yes, sir.
You know, and stuff, you know, and um, my dad gave me two hundred dollars just to spending money, because you know, nice guy, good father.
Sure.
And um, I sent a hundred dollars off to my dealer in New York City, uh, to send me a rock. And being the honest woman that she was, she did. Um, and then I smoked that up and then I was like, off to the races again. The first thing, the first thing, okay, so honestly, you can't be picking up if you're gonna work the steps. You, you need to get clean.
That's right.
In order to make a conscious decision. The steps require conscious decisions right, all along the way. And the farther you go, the cleaner, the more conscious you can become, the more honest you can become. And also at the tables, you, if you relate to other people and go, how does, how is their story relating to me? Because we're all suffering the same human experience. And, and we're, and it's, it's a blessing to find a community that understands what you're talking about.
Sure.
Because people who haven't gotten addicted just don't get it.
They do not.
It's lovely.
Yeah.
And so I, I've, I've been enjoying uh, coming here to um, Live Right, to hear about the programs. I came to a luncheon with uh, electives.
Nice. Yes, I remember that.
It was awesome to have you here too. We, we appreciate all your support, Henry. We really do.
Uh, it's close to my heart. I was um, the chair of the Warren Center Line Prevention Coalition.
Okay.
And we worked a lot with your sister organization, Care, which is working in the same, you know, same general field. I like, I like uh, I like the Live Right experience. To me, this uh, gets me in my heart muscles.
Okay. In your early, in your early years of recovery.
Yeah.
Did your spirituality ever waver? Did you ever have uh, reservations?
Oh, yeah. Um, and also like every once in a while, I'll still have, for instance, a using dream.
Sure.
Because, you know, like,
You're an addict, that's.
If you're an addict, if you're an addict, you're, you're, you are an addict for life. Once you are a pickle, you are no longer a cucumber.
That's right.
It's a really, you know, these things are, are truisms that are just that true. Um, so, did I ever waver? Well, also, it took me a long time to get into the spirituality of it.
Hmm, okay.
Um, while I was, while I was using, while my brain was messed up because of all the different drugs I'd used, I never shot up drugs, but I did, I, I took Valium and uh, smoked crack cocaine.
Of course.
I smoked marijuana. And incidentally, I gave up my anonymity a long time ago.
Okay.
Uh, my, my uh, the sponsor, my sponsors was Jack Bowen, who ran the Church of the Day. And it was a big recovery church. I had a good chance to work in their library and their um, and bookstore.
Okay.
And uh, I'd worked there. And then I worked in Borders Books and Music. And it was, it was better, it was great, it was great working at a recovery store to give it away.
Yeah.
You know?
Service work, so to speak.
Yeah, you know, teacher.
Keep the mindset.
Yep.
You can't keep what you have without giving it away.
Right. Yeah, it's in the literature.
Does it?
Yeah.
So, yeah, and then, you know, like on things like, was it, when I tried to be a sponsor, and I'm willing to be a sponsor, but uh, the experience of being a sponsor, I learned is that it keeps you sober. It doesn't necessarily keep your sponsee sober.
Right.
I, I had two sponsees. Um, one, they were both living in Serenity Manor in Dearborn with me, who was, who was run by Al Teraski, which ran it a lot like the um, what do you call your recovery homes? Structured living?
Yes, sober living structure.
Sober, yeah, sure. Yeah, structured. So, he had a very similar structure. Um, but uh, he, he wasn't as interested in having people go out as quickly into the world to work. And uh, anyway, but um, so, did I have my doubts? Yeah. Well, the first one um, went out and was never heard from again. His sister said, we believe he's dead, ten years later, when I asked her. And then um, you know, it shakes you. You know, when your emotions have been frozen.
Yeah.
It's difficult to deal with the emotional realities of this. But this is, this is the heart of the matter.
Yeah.
When we relate to each other with our hearts, we can get somewhere.
Right.
When we just use our brains, they're so tricky.
Yeah.
And the smarter you are, the hard, the more they screw up your recovery.
Exactly. For our listeners out there, um, when we're struggling with our spirituality, when we have our doubts, when we have our reservations, how do we get it back? How do we re-bolster that, them feelings and thoughts again? How, how do you do it?
I, I love my recovery circle.
Okay.
Because um, actually, uh, I haven't gone to meetings a lot, but I've surrounded myself with recovering people. Part of that was my experience with the recovery church.
Okay.
And um, a bunch of us are still meeting on a regular basis. And.
That's good, that's good stuff.
Yeah.
And we, we've learned a lot. My, my friend Diane, for instance, uh, has spent a lot of time going to uh, our recovery. She's, she's not an alcoholic. But she believes very much in the spiritual principles and setting goals.
Sure.
Uh, doing affirmation work, journaling, all the kinds of things that help anybody who has any kind of addiction problem. There's a lot of work to be done.
Yeah.
In order to stay on a, a straight and narrow course. Or uh, having a daily reader to read. It could be an actual recovery reader. Uh, uh, I've been reading the Daily Word from Unity.
Alright, so literature, yes.
Yeah, literature, that's great. I got a question for you, Henry. Um, so you're a public figure, you know, you're a city councilman, you're, you're uh, you, you do a lot of service for the city and, and for the county in a whole. How do you handle the pressure of like, the public life? While not, while maintaining like spirituality? Does that make sense? Like,
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, how, how do you do that, man? Cause I, I have a hard time with that. That, that would be hard for me.
Uh, I can't say that I always do it really great. And sometimes my head is, is pretty far gone when I'm dealing with all the different pressures, especially right now in this political environment.
Sure.
Yeah.
That I find myself not in agreement.
I don't envy you.
With things going on at the federal level, or the international level. And they're bringing it home to, to us in Michigan.
Right.
With the Lansing level. Uh, so, yeah, there's all that. Uh, fortunately, I came to believe in God when I was about thirteen.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, I mean, this is, this is, this is such an interesting program. The questions you were ta- talking about in the preview. Um, so, um, I had been depressed since I was nine years old.
Mm-hmm.
So for four years, I was like suicidally depressed. I wanted to die. And I didn't see any color in anything, or any meaning or value in anything. Um, and it was just one day, it's like uh, that broke and the realization that God was in everything uh, occurred to me, which I think is a gift from God.
Right.
It's like, a lot of people, I think, never experienced that. So, that, then uh, I ended up uh, doing a lot of yoga and learning how to meditate.
Okay.
And, you know, so, did it keep me from becoming an addict down the road? No, it didn't. So, um, never getting too cocky is extremely important.
Yeah.
And so you wanna avoid risky behaviors, um, and stick, stick with your recovery type people.
Yeah, they say the term, if you uh, if you are in those risky behaviors, and if you sit in a barber shop long enough, you're eventually gonna get a haircut, right, Henry?
Yeah.
Yeah. I believe the same thing for in recovery. Um, you know, it doesn't matter how long you have. I, I believe getting,
That's right.
I, I believe getting cocky or complacent, like we were just talking about, is a very dangerous place to be in a recovery, you know? I, I was at a point where, I, I only have four years, right? I had four years clean. And I thought I was untouchable, Henry. I, I thought there was nothing in the world that could take me out. And I was, I was working at a, at a rehab center. And I was teaching groups, telling these guys this crap.
Right.
Saying, there's nothing that can make me relapse. Nothing.
Shoot.
And then.
No, 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 no.
So I got, right. It's crazy, crazy. But I truly believed it. I didn't, I wasn't just doing lip service. I believed this.
Okay.
But then I, then I got complacent. And I said, you know what?
Yeah.
I'm gonna stop.
You convinced yourself.
Yeah. I, I don't need a meeting today. You know, I'll go tomorrow. Then I went from, you know, I don't need that men's group anymore. I feel pretty good. We went through the steps all the way through. I think I'm gonna step back from my men's group.
Uh-huh.
And then I go, you know, tomorrow sounds good to go to a meeting, but maybe I'll go next week.
Have you ever heard this? Ego is edging God out?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the truth. And that's what.
So where's the humility in that? The first step involves humility.
That's right.
And what is humility? What is humility to you, Eddie?
Humility to me?
Yeah.
That's a good question. I, I would say.
I'll tell you what humility is to me.
Okay.
Okay, because I don't expect you to know.
Okay.
Okay. My, my uh, my, the, the director of my halfway house.
Sure.
Serenity Manor, wasn't when I was in. Um, so many interesting experiences there to talk about. But he said that none of the guys in the house had even gotten to the first step. And we were all thinking we were experts.
Sure.
Uh, my roommate had been through seven recovery programs, spent a couple of years sober, and then relapsed again.
Sure.
So, this is scary.
Yeah.
And to be humble, you have to be open to learning.
Yep.
You have to think yourself small and the other one big.
No ego.
You have to, well, you know, we all have ego. And, and so it, you know, that's complicated too, because in order, it's a part of us that deals with the outside world.
Sure.
And then, i- i- in order to talk to people, you have to do that. But what do you put on top of that? So this is the spiritual thing, I think, that you're trying to get at. This is my answer for this, where is the spirituality? Try, do we try to put our higher power in charge of every action that we do? If you do that well, then that'll keep you pretty humble, I think.
Yeah.
But as long as we're going on with our great thoughts.
Exactly. I have to.
Where's our feeling? It's really comes down, like, feeling is our spirit, right?
Yeah.
And you have so much feeling and spirit.
Sure.
And that's beautiful. If you ride with that, I think you're gonna do really well, Eddie.
Yeah.
But if you go with your brain, I have severe reservations about where you're gonna go here.
Sure.
And that's, and that's speaking, you know, from my own experience.
Sure.
No.
I was, I was in that halfway, I was eleven months in recovery and still having urges to use, when I asked Al Teraski, the director of Serenity Manor.
Sure.
How come these guys are talking about they've had the urge to use lifted from them? How did they do that?
Right.
I, I, I uh, you know, the, the practice was if you wanted to talk privately with him, you could ask everybody else to clear the room. I had never done that.
Sure.
I, I said, everybody, please clear the room. I just really need to talk to Al. And this was really embarrassing.
Sure, sure. It can be.
He said, he said, um, have you ever tried prayer? And I believe in God. I believe in the power of prayer. And uh,
Eye-opening, wasn't it?
So I tried that, what do you know?
Yeah.
Almost instantly, I think this is the kind of prayer that God most loves to answer.
Yes.
And so everything that you want for your recovery, Eddie, I hope you, you pray about it sincerely and connect with God and, and ask.
I do today. Uh, I was talking in past tense with all that other stuff.
Okay.
Um, like I said, I had four years.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. What happened was I got complacent. Like I said, I stopped going to, stopped hitting the meetings every day. I, I'm a meeting maker. And I truly believe the saying, meeting makers make it. You know, you, you gotta get to a meeting. Really, it's program workers make it, but you ain't working a program if you're not making meetings.
Okay.
And that's how I see it.
Okay.
Prayer is huge to me.
Okay.
Yeah, ego busting.
I decided to take back my own will. And that's what I did. That's what we're talking about, right?
Okay.
I took back my will and I stopped living on God's will. And uh, ultimately, I made a bad choice. My dad got sick. And uh, before he passed away, I decided to use. And I didn't use any of the tools that I've gathered over the last five years in recovery. And it sucks. It sucks that that happened. But today, I, I feel like humbled, right? I feel very humbled, Henry. Coming back into the program, getting that white key tag, um, when I took pride in the fact that I've only gotten one. You know, now I, that's not the case for me. I do not believe recu- uh, I do not believe myself, I do not believe relapse is a part of recovery. Unfortunately, it is a part of my story now. Um, but today, I'm working a stronger program than I ever have in my life. Um, I pray every day. I go to my men's group again.
Okay.
It sounds like a good idea today, going to men's group. It sounds like a good idea going to a meeting after work, you know? And, and that's the things that keep me sane. That's the keep, things that keep me spiritual. That's the things that keep me clean. Um, and I don't see myself veering off of that again, because I know what happens.
Right.
And I forgot about the pain over those four years, the pain of being out there. They refund that stuff real quick.
Oh, yeah.
When you go back out, they refund it real quick.
Yeah, back to the first step.
Yes, sir.
So there's the uh, there's uh, having to surrender, admit that we were powerless.
Yep.
And.
That's the ego busting in me, because I find myself um, having to bust my ego. And by doing that, how do I do it? Just as you said.
Yeah.
Being honest.
Yep, okay.
Looking in the mirror.
Right.
And saying, alright, God, and then I open myself up to prayer.
Right.
And uh, that gives me the humility. Alright, I'm just gonna shut up and listen to what Eddie has to say today. You know, as an example. And you know what I mean? But yes, that humility, learning from others.
Right.
I'm always preaching, if anybody knows me, I'm always preaching about looking in the mirror, keeping your mouth shut, and listen to the people who come before you.
Keeping my mouth shut's hard to do on a podcast.
No, no, he's not talking about you. That's an old school mentality.
No, that's really good. That's really good.
That's how I was brought up in the program.
But I, I, yeah, how powerless was I when I was, you know, trying to get home and I was in a motel and someone had left little droplets of candle on the floor. And I had dropped my last rock on the floor.
That's powerlessness, man.
And I, I, I saw something that looked like, exactly like what I thought that should look like. I put it in my pipe, I torched that up, and I sucked in a bunch of uh, of wax. And I thought I was gonna die. You know? It's like, how low do you go?
Yeah.
Um, and I'd rather have people have high bottoms. Like, don't even get started. The best way to do drugs is none at all.
Right.
Right.
I'd like to get a few messages across here while I'm at it. That's one of the cooler things here about Live Right too, is now we're trying to reach these kids, you know? We, we got these youth grants and, and we're able to work with kids from Right. It's a six to twenty-four. Yeah, six to twenty-four.
Building positivity.
We're trying to hit those high bottoms, right?
Right.
We don't want them to start. We don't want them to be like us.
Yeah.
And go through the crap that.
Right. Anything I can do to help someone else not go where I've gone, makes me really happy.
Absolutely.
And if I, it's all for just one person, if only one person gets something out of this podcast.
That's it.
Then I think we've all been pretty successful. But I'll tell, I need to tell you another thing.
Yes, sir.
And that is something Al Teraski said, it's Alcoholics Anonymous, uh, we're here to, the alcoholics need to be, have their asses kicked.
Sure.
So we're not here to be super polite to each other.
Right.
Right?
Sure. Bruce is mean to me all day.
All day.
All day long.
He's only one of the less we be mean, dude.
Right. And the paradox in that is that we're all probably adult children of alcoholics or some dysfunctional people.
Something going on.
And so we got, we got into our codependency. And I didn't know what codependency was. There, there's so many things that I've had to learn. And, you know, as you learn, you get stronger.
Sure.
It doesn't mean you can get cocky.
Right.
No, that's true.
That's it.
That's true.
It's a dangerous place to be.
So there's, there's that. And then um, the next thing is um, well, let's see. I'm gonna go back to my notes.
Sure, please.
So, first of all, uh, oh boy. The first step, we admitted we were powerless over our addiction or alcohol, um, and our lives had become unmanageable. So, there's the unmanageability of it.
Yep.
Um, the, I'd been working for new alternatives for children in New York, when I was driving a bus, and I had been staying up all night smoking crack.
Sure.
And um, no one was hurt, but there was a social worker and a kid in the, in the van, when I passed out while I was driving and I scraped some cars in Brooklyn.
Oh, wow.
And um, they were into, so, they were social service workers. So they knew all about this. They recognized what was going on with me.
They saw the signs.
And they said, would you like some help? And I said, oh, no, no, I don't need any help. I'm talking, I'm just talking about, in case it'll make you feel any better.
Sure.
How stupid I acted.
Oh, sure, sure.
When my dad, my dad had to take me out to a restaurant and, you know, grilled me. Hell, what is going on? Blah, 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 from me.
Mm-hmm.
Hell, what is going on? You know, ten times or something. And finally, I stood up in the middle of this fancy restaurant in Bloomfield Hills and screamed, Dad, I'm a drug addict. And I, I'm not proud to admit that I had gotten to that point. Um, but if I can help anyone else not get to that point, I'm willing to, to give up my anonymity for that.
Sure.
Anyway, sorry. So, um, that, there's uh, in this step, they're talking about honesty, humility, willingness, powerlessness, unmanageability, and spiritual growth.
Yep.
And on the point, to me, the main point is the honesty of admitting that we're powerless over uh, our addiction, over our codependency.
Exactly.
You know, what, what got, what got you to be a drug addict was your codependency. The issues, unresolved issues of your childhood, all that kind of stuff, how you relate to other people.
Yep.
So, learning how to relate to other people better is real key. Then um, it's a fond, foundational element of spiritual growth. How can you surrender if you don't think you need to surrender anything?
Right, right.
Humility, I didn't understand, humility wasn't really talked about in my family.
Uh-huh.
Uh, my, my dad happened to um, be a World War II vet, had a. Uh my, my dad happened to um be a World War II vet, had a lot of problems, did a lot of drinking, my mom was his champion codependent. Anyway, humility, I I came to find out was about understanding my character defects.
Yeah.
Understanding um what their opposites were, the shortcomings, and um owning the whole batch. So that would be, like, the shortcomings are things like love. And honesty.
Sure.
And if I can own those, then I can keep them.
Sure, yeah, I, you know, and 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 touching on the um, touching on the codependency stuff, like um, I I believe, you know, we're wearing a mask. The the drugs and alcohol are just a mask to cover up something far deeper than than just using.
Yeah, we discussed that last show and that's, and that's, I think, that's paramount all the time.
Yeah, like I I could say, you know, um I I do believe to a certain extent that it's also learned behavior. You know, if you're around it, you're, and you find it to be normal, you know, some stuff that's wrong. Addiction was something in 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 parts of my family growing up that were uh very relevant. And I thought certain things were normal, certain activities were normal. And growing up, it was easy to find, it was easy to um justify.
Sure, the use, yeah.
Yeah, and again, I'm talking about people that has very high positions, you know, in the state and 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 I saw them doing things and I thought it was okay to do it myself.
Hey, Henry.
Yeah. Yes, Bruce?
Have you found, have you found um in your recovery journey that your um your spiritual life or spiritual mentality has grown? And do you see it to be unlimited in growth?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just asking.
Sure, uh. It is wonderful to uh feel connected to God.
Yes.
And it's wonderful to be around other people who are connected to God.
That drives me more when I, when that, when you're feeling that.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, you know, I I would call those the winners.
Yep.
And um an adult, in my, in my opinion, after all these years, surrounds themselves with um people who they they wanna be or they like to be, that they really like to be with.
Yeah.
Um you surround the people who can support you and your goals.
Yep.
So one goal is to to recover. Um other goals can be whatever career, profession, um or relationship status you wanna have. Um and so you you would think about that, you would think about what what are your good goals? Because generally, we got into trouble when we didn't have goals that were worthy of ourselves.
Exactly.
Yes.
No, I can relate to that.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, if you.
I was just existing in life.
There you go.
I've been.
Yeah.
As long as I got through twenty-four hours, that was fine.
Right.
But that isn't life, that is not living a life.
And learning how to live, I believe, is actually where this is going.
Relearn along, yeah, I had to relearn along, I'm still, I'm still learning and I'm sixty-five. I'm not ashamed to say it.
Right.
You know, um I had to admit that when I was doing step one, I had to look in the mirror and say, all right, you don't even know what you're doing. You know what I mean? Give it to God.
Right.
Listen to the people that came before you.
Yeah.
You know, and it's.
Right.
And, yeah, so, yeah, it's definitely growth and uh, but as you said, um then I do surround my people that have that spirituality, especially when I waver sometimes, you know, I don't have to say anything, people recognize that my spirit, spirituality is waning at some point.
Right.
And that's who the, who people, that's who I keep close to me, are people like that, that can say, hey, what's the matter with you, Bruce?
Right.
You know what I mean? And when that, and when that happens to me, wow, someone cares, that's the spirituality of them.
Right.
And then and and that, 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 that is, that's growth for me, when I recognize that.
Right.
And I can feel that.
And if you even have one true friend in your whole life, my mom said, and she she probably knew, you're really lucky, you're very fortunate.
Yeah?
Yeah, I've got a a true friend and my friend Diane.
Nice, that's wonderful, that's wonderful.
It's funny you use.
We're we're regularly, you know, connecting and like she will feel no compunction. And telling me exactly what she sees in my shadow side.
Okay.
Ever heard of the shadow side?
Yes, I have.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's old school stuff too, man.
Yeah, it's funny you use the term, a term I use all the time, the winners.
Okay.
When I uh, when I see a newcomer coming into my home group or something, everybody automatically wants to sit at the cool table, the click table up front, the front left.
That can happen.
Yeah.
As I.
It's called the codependency.
Yeah, those, yeah, the recovered table.
Okay.
I like to call it, but no, there 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 are clicks in the programs and stuff. But what I tell the newcomers, and this is what was told to me as a newcomer, is sit back and watch. Sit back and look at people and you're gonna find somebody that's got something you want.
Right.
Stick to them, people, stick with the winners.
Right.
So that's what I tell them, when I walk a newcomer over to a table with a bunch of people with some solid clean time.
Yeah.
I go, welcome to the winners' table, kid.
Right.
Stick and stay, you know?
There you go.
And and that's just a term I use all the time. I believe in sticking with the winners, cause if you don't, you're gonna end up a loser, just like that, you know? And and we've already been there, so we don't need to do that no more.
Awesome, awesome show, guys.
Okay.
Henry, no, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you very much. We uh, yeah, uh thank you for your uh community service in City of Warren.
Yeah.
Um you guys are doing a wonderful job.